Crazy here the last couple of days.
That's fine, um, and you hit the send button on the report that I was trying to get done, so.
Okay, okay.
We'll talk more later if need be.
Okay.
Alright, we'll go ahead and get started, since we're on a little bit of a limited time schedule tonight. So first and foremost, I just wanted to thank everybody in attendance tonight for their interest in this project. We're here tonight for the Design Public Hearing for the Barracks Road and Emmett Street Intersection Project being administered by the city. My name's Kyle Kling, I'm with the Department of Public Works and the project manager for this project. I'll start things off by just giving a brief overview of what to expect tonight. We'll get things started with a brief pre-recorded presentation that'll last about fifteen minutes or so. That presentation will just highlight the basic design characteristics of this project and walk everybody through some of the public outreach phases that we've been through to date on the project. Following that presentation, we'll open up, we'll open up the floor for question and answers sessions to attendees. That session is just to have an informal back and forth with the design team and get a little more clarity on some of the aspects that may not be conveyed during the presentation. Following that question and answer session, we'll begin the formal public comment period for this project. I'll go into more detail on that when we get to that stage, but for those of you who are familiar with Planning Commission public hearings or City Council public hearings, it's very similar to, to that. Prior to getting started, I'd just like to do a brief round of introductions with various panelists, so at this time I'll hand it over to our design consultant for the project, Brian Copeland with the Timmons Group.
Good evening, thank you Kyle. Again, my name's Brian Copeland. I'm with Timmons Group, been with Timmons for nearly twenty years. I've had the pleasure of working with Kyle since the beginning on this project, and those of you who have attended previous public workshops and other public events know me and our team. But again, it's been a pleasure to work with the community to try to develop the plan you're gonna see tonight, so I'm looking, I'm feeling, I'm excited to share it with you. And I'll, I'll let Tim introduce himself.
Yeah, my name's Tim March. I've been working on transportation project management with Kyle for nearly four years now, and I will be taking over the project. Kyle is relocating back to Northern Virginia in the not-too-distant future. I have been familiar with the project, and I have worked with Brian a little bit on the West Main project, so I am familiar with it. I've been working on the Emmett Streetscape project as well as the East High Streetscape project, so I'm also familiar with the processes and where we are in the project.
Thank you. Michael, did you wanna introduce yourself, followed by Brennan?
Sure, thank you Brian. My name's Michael Barnes, I work with VDOT. This project is a part of a VDOT city partnership, with VDOT providing a significant portion of the funding for the project. I'm here tonight to serve. If any questions come up in that regard, I think it's been a good project so far, and I look forward to getting on to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you Brennan.
And I'm Brennan Duncan, I'm the City Traffic Engineer. I've been involved in this project since the original, original application to VDOT that came about as part of the site plan development for both the parcels on the corner of Emmett Street and Barracks Road.
Great, thanks everyone. So I'll go ahead and get this presentation queued up real quick here, and we'll get things underway. Can you guys see my screen?
Welcome to the Barracks Road and Emmett Street Improvements Project Design Public Hearing.
This presentation is being brought to you by the City of Charlottesville and in conjunction with the city's consultant, Timmons Group. Thank you for your interest in the project. In this presentation, we will be providing an overview of the project, sharing key takeaways from various public outreach events, highlighting the major design features to be implemented, and reviewing the process moving forward from here. If after this presentation you would like to learn more about the details of the project, you can visit our project website at www.barracksemmitimprovements.com. You can also review this presentation in its entirety, or submit any questions you may have by visiting this website. First, we will give an overview of the project, including the purpose of the project, project limits, general scope of improvements, project budget, and overall schedule of design development activities. The purpose of the project is to improve the operational performance of the Barracks Road and Emmett Street intersection while also enhancing bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities serving the adjacent neighborhoods. The limits of the project range from the intersection of Barracks Road and Emmett Street, then extending east ridly along Barracks Road to its intersection with Buckingham Road and Hilltop Road. In two thousand and eighteen, the City of Charlottesville submitted an application for funding through the Virginia Department of Transportation's Smart Scale Prioritization Process, which provides funding for local projects across the state on a competitive basis. The project was awarded eight point six million dollars of state and federal funding in order to improve the Barracks Road and Emmett Street intersection, as well as provide multimodal upgrades along Barracks Road. The general scope of improvements, as outlined in the Smart Scale application, include construction of a northbound right turn lane on Emmett Street, an additional westbound left turn lane on Barracks Road, upgraded traffic signal equipment, and increased median widths to provide enhanced refuge space for pedestrians. The scope of bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Barracks Road were somewhat less defined, which provided an opportunity to involve local citizens in the early planning and decision-making process. More to come on that in a few minutes. The planning phase of the project began in two thousand and nineteen with the collection of traffic data, survey of existing conditions, defining corridor constraints, evaluating alternatives through public engagement, and developing detailed engineering design plans. The design has gone through several rounds of VDOT and city engineering review, and is nearing a point suitable for acquiring right-of-way from adjacent property owners. Coordination with private utility companies have been ongoing to establish relocation strategies that minimize impacts to properties, while also removing conflicts with planned construction. While right-of-way is being acquired and utilities relocated, final engineering details will be completed to gain approval by VDOT and city staff by the time the project is ready to go to construction in two thousand and twenty-three. Next, we will review key takeaways from various public meetings and workshops that have taken place over the course of the last two years. It is the city's goal to provide continuous opportunities for the public to engage and influence the development of city transportation projects. In line with this goal, we began the planning process by meeting with individual property owners directly affected by the project, and continued with the formation of a steering committee made up of various interest group representatives. With steering committee input, we learned more about the real-life issues and challenges local residents face, as well as what goals they would like to see accomplished with the project. We also developed effective strategies to solicit meaningful feedback from local citizens, which led to holding a public workshop in late two thousand and nineteen to solicit ideas on various alternatives, which were collected by an online public survey. Key takeaways from this outreach campaign included avoiding improvements on the north side of Barracks Road, implementing a shared-use path rather than in-road bicycle facilities, and most resoundingly, making all reasonable efforts to limit impacts to the existing tree canopy, which makes Barracks Road an attractive neighborhood gateway. After presenting the preferred concept in a public open house, the City of Charlottesville Planning Commission and City Council were presented with the public engagement results and preferred concept design, which led to City Council passing a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Planning Commission that the proposed project is substantially in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. Now we will take a closer look at some of the specific design features of the project, which are focused primarily on making this area of the city safer and more efficient for all users. The Barracks Road and Emmett Street intersection is a highly constrained urban confluence of heavily trafficked arterial roadways, with commercial businesses flanking all corners of the intersection. As such, one of the most significant challenges faced was how to improve operations along with addressing bicycle and pedestrian safety without significantly impacting these businesses. You can see from this rendering that the eastern leg of the intersection seeks to repurpose the existing roadway between existing curb lines to provide an additional westbound left turn lane. This improves operations by allowing eastbound and westbound left-turning movements to occur simultaneously. The currently skewed crosswalks have also been realigned to shorten crossing distances, which has been aided by the creation of a refuge island in the southeast corner at the CVS. The project will also widen existing medians to six feet in order to provide safe pedestrian refuge across all legs of the intersection. Finally, the existing traffic signal will be rebuilt to provide upgraded signal controls for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic, and all accommodations will be fully accessible per ADA standards. There was a significant emphasis on Barracks Road during the various public meetings held over the last two years. A couple of the concerns we heard were how the existing tree canopy might be impacted by construction of wider bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, as well as concerns over vehicle speeds traversing the steep grade of Barracks Road. To address these concerns, the project proposes to relocate the existing curb line on the south side of Barracks Road, which is shown on the left side of this rendered cross-section, to provide narrower eleven-foot travel lanes. Considering the existing lane widths range from twelve feet to sixteen feet wide, this will have a calming effect on traffic in both directions. We have also minimized the width of the shared-use path and grass planting strip to further reduce the overall cross-section. Finally, the south side of Barracks Road will feature a decorative retaining wall focused on limiting impacts to private properties, existing trees, and their root systems. Barracks Road will also feature enhanced bus stops in both directions of the CAT bus route on Barracks Road across from Hessian Road in the eastbound direction and at Meadowbrook Road in the westbound direction. The Hessian Road bus stop pictured in this rendering will include a special-designed cantilever bus shelter intended to minimize interference with shared-use path users, which is a slight deviation from the design of the city's standard shelter. The Meadowbrook Road bus stop will feature improved crosswalk accessibility and curb protection for waiting passengers. As previously mentioned, one of the most significant concerns we heard across all spectrums of the community was to preserve the neighborhood character created by the existing tree canopy that drapes over Barracks Road. Although there will be several trees that will be impacted by the project, even with the use of retaining walls, we will be supplementing the forested areas behind the walls in a way that will help re-establish the canopy over time. To create some order in how this is accomplished, and in consideration of compatibility with surrounding species, we have strategically located large deciduous flowering and evergreen trees within available spaces. And since these trees will be planted on private property to replenish what was lost, each of the owners will have an opportunity to select from a menu of compatible species approved by the city. This is a recent picture of existing Barracks Road looking downgrade near the intersection of Buckingham Road. You will notice the steep slopes with dense vegetation on both sides, narrow sidewalk up against traffic, and wide travel lanes, which create a hazardous environment for bicycles and pedestrians. This graphic illustrates how Barracks Road will become more suitable for safe multimodal travel when the project is completed. Along with relocating the existing curb to help calm traffic and maximize the use of available space, the project will also feature the addition of a grass buffer and variable-height retaining wall with brick-pattern architectural treatments, which will run the entire length of Barracks Road between Hessian Road and Buckingham Road. The retaining walls will also include a concrete ditch behind the wall that captures drainage before it runs over the wall and onto the shared-use path, as well as wall-mounted path lighting, which provides an appealing visual effect at night. This path lighting was chosen as a way to avoid lateral obstructions created by street light poles in the buffer strip, while also creating a safe and attractive experience for local residents traveling home at night. Finally, let's have a look at our next steps in the process. Once we conclude the process of compiling and responding to comments received during this Design Public Hearing, we will seek approval of the design from City Council. After that, we will request and obtain authorization from VDOT to proceed to the right-of-way acquisition phase of the project, which will then allow us to have detailed conversations with property owners directly affected by the construction of the project. We expect that this process may last a year or more, but once it concludes and the design is finalized, we will be able to proceed with moving private utilities and begin construction of the project, which is anticipated in two thousand and twenty-three. We hope the information shared in this presentation has been helpful in your understanding of the project. As a reminder, if you would like to submit any questions or comments related to the project for consideration by the city, or view other plans or materials illustrating the proposed features of the project, you may visit the project website at www.barracksemmitimprovements.com. There will also be an opportunity during the public comment period of this Design Public Hearing to provide comments. Or if you need special assistance seeing or understanding the project plans, you can call or email Kyle Kling, City of Charlottesville Project Manager at klingk@charlottesville.gov, or by calling four three four nine seven zero three three nine four to set up an appointment at City Hall. Please submit any questions or comments you may have by July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. All comments provided by this date will be responded to in writing and available on the project website by August sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you very much for your time and interest in the Barracks Road and Emmett Street Improvements Project.
Alright, with that being done, we'd like to open it up now for any questions that attendees may have. So if you could use the raise hand icon located in the toolbar of the Zoom feature, we'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Also, I see we have one phone-in call listener, so if you also wanna ask a question, you could just hit star nine on your telephone, and that will be the equivalent to the raise hand icon, but right now I see three hands, so we're gonna go ahead and start with Joel Base. Hi Joel, can you hear us? You might have to unmute your mic. Joel, if you can hear us, click the mute, unmute button on your screen.
I'm gonna try somebody else. So next we have Mary Louise. Mary Louise, can you hear us? You also need to unmute your microphone. There we go, all set. Okay. Now I got it now. Um, one of the things that has come up quite, quite frequently in the intersection of Barracks and Emmett is we have a lot of panhandlers, and one of them, one of them is really apt to get killed someday, and cuz he dances and things, and my thought is that if this new configuration is more appealing to those people, and any way to keep everybody safe? Mary Louise, we're hearing about every other word. Are we done?
We only got about half of that. We, most of your words were choppy, and we only heard about every other word, so if you could repeat your question, that would be great.
I'm gonna try it now, can you hear me better?
That's better.
The intersection of Barracks and Emmett is such a magnet to panhandlers, and this new configuration seems so much better for them. Is there anything that can be done to prevent that?
Yeah, it's a great question, Mary Louise. So I think holistically, we have to look at all pedestrians in general when we take into account a project of this nature. Unfortunately, I just think that's a circumstance of living in an urban environment, is that you'll have those individuals who gravitate to those locations. I think from a design perspective, having those refuge islands there provide a more welcoming environment for individuals who are actually, you know, maneuvering through the intersection. You know, it's something we can definitely touch base with, with the PD on and see what can be done to help kind of mitigate that, but from a design perspective, having those refuge islands there are really beneficial.
Perhaps if they were, they were smaller and there was less standing area, cuz one guy put a camp out there.
Yeah, so, so unfortunately, in order to, for it to be considered a pedestrian refuge island, it has to be a certain width, and I believe that is six feet, which is what we designed this to. So we are designing these to, you know, the minimal extent possible. Like I said, I, I really believe it's just a product, the environment. We can, like I said, we can work with police to see what can be done and work with our code enforcement department as well, but I think it's probably likely something that's gonna continue to exist.
The police, the police told me tough, there's really nothing they could do.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I don't have any other means to answer that besides working with the police department. It's, it's out of my purview as a project manager. You know, like I said, our focus here is to design, you know, a project that's beneficial to, to all users. And I'm gonna reshare my screen real quick, just to pull up a rendering of the project in case there's any specific questions here. We can kind of work off of a map, so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Alright, so we're gonna try Joel Boss again to see if we can hear him this time. Hello Joel, can you hear us? Joel? I'm going to, he's on another Zoom, so I'm gonna try to bring his other self in. Hey Joel, can you hear us? You'll have to hit unmute.
Ah, I got a message.
We're getting a lot of feedback, so if you're on two screens or listening to this on another device, can you turn that one off?
Okay, how are we doing now?
Perfect.
Great. So I just have a question of, this has been a long-time question for me about Charlottesville and planning and development. Is, how do we actually develop in this town without working with UVA and getting feedback from them on their plans? And, I mean, let's face it, this intersection, you know, we haven't had any events lately, but it totally shuts down when there's a basketball game or a football game or a concert. It's also, the right-hand lane is the problem, turning right, it backs all the way up to the top of the hill. You got, you're adding another left-hand lane, we don't need another left-hand lane. People can't even get into that lane because they're backed all the way up Barracks Road. So, I mean, I don't think you're really addressing the issues here. I think you're using grant money when you're not really addressing any traffic problem here. And, and how do we do planning in this town without talking to UVA?
So Joel, I'll go ahead and tackle the UVA question first. So in our department, we meet quarterly with the university to discuss projects that the city is administering, as well as projects that the university has throughout their grounds. And during those conversations, we always discuss how things will trend during the future and how projects may supplement each other. So, so that coordination is ongoing with us in the office of the architect at UVA. In terms of major events, it's something we, we discuss as well from time to time when these projects are going on. I think we're far enough out with this project that there's still a little bit of coordination that needs to be done during the construction phase, but I can assure you that those conversations will take place, and we'll make sure that we'll minimize any disruptions, or try to mitigate those to our fullest extent when that time comes.
But are these public communications public to everyone else, or are they private to you and UVA? Because that's really not fair, that we, where is this document?
Hey Joel, can you hear us? You'll have to hit unmute.
I got a message.
We're getting a lot of feedback. You need to turn off your
Yeah, you are, you are having a few technical issues.
Hello.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Are you still, we're getting a lot of feedback. So if you're on two screens or listening to this on another device, can you turn that one off?
Okay, how are we doing now?
Perfect.
Great. So I just have a question of, this has been a long time question for me about Charlottesville and planning and development. Is, how do we actually develop in this town without working with UVA and getting feedback from them on their plans? And I mean, let's face it, this intersection, you know, we haven't had any events lately, but it totally shuts down when there's a basketball game or a football game or a concert. It's also the right-hand lane is the problem, turning right. It backs all the way up to the top of the hill. You've got, you're adding another left-hand lane. We don't need another left-hand lane. People can't even get into that lane because they're backed all the way up Barracks Road. So I mean, I don't think you're really addressing the issues here. I think you're using grant money when you're not really addressing any traffic problem here. And, and how do we do planning in this town without talking to UVA?
So Joel, I'll go ahead and tackle the UVA question first. So in our department, we meet quarterly with the university to discuss projects that the city is administering as well as projects that the university has throughout their grounds. And during those conversations, we always discuss how things will trend during the future and how projects may supplement each other. So, so that coordination is ongoing with us in the office of the architect at UVA. In terms of major events, it's something we, we discuss as well from time to time when these projects are going on. I think we're far enough out with this project that there's still a little bit of coordination that needs to be done during the construction phase, but I can assure you that those conversations will take place and we'll make sure that we'll minimize any disruptions or try to mitigate those to our fullest extent when that time comes.
But are these public communications public to everyone else or are they private to you and UVA?
Yeah.
Because that's really not fair that we, where is this documented in your, you know, presentation? That UVA is on board with this. They know the implications. I mean, don't, let's face it, we don't have any traffic in the summer. We have traffic when UVA is in town. You know, they don't pay for it, but right now you don't have a problem at the intersection. You do in the fall. And I don't know how you could ever address this without having them have some impact, like should this be the corridor into the city or not? That needs to be partly discussed and coordinated with them. And it needs to be public and I want to participate in that conversation between you and UVA or me, my town and UVA.
And that's understood. So they have been involved with this project outside of that internal meeting as well. They do have a representative on this project steering committee. So they've been on board with this since we kicked that off back in 2019. So like I said, they, there is that communication back and forth with them on various aspects, particularly on, on this project as well. And then I guess to answer your second question, I'll, I'll kick it off with a high level and then I'll defer to Brian or Brennan for specifics. But you're right, there is a large queue back up, up the hill currently, particularly during peak hours. By adding an additional lane to that intersection, a lot of the issues we're seeing now is that people cannot get into the left-hand turn lanes to make that movement in the existing condition. In the proposed condition, we're hoping to filter more traffic into those dual turn lanes, which will shorten that queue and allow people to get access to those turn lanes.
I don't see any, I don't see any evidence of that at all.
So I'll take that. Joel, I'm the traffic engineer for the city. By adding the additional left turn lane, it allows us to run the, the opposite left turn lane. So if you're heading eastbound and westbound at the same time, which gives us more time at the intersection to, to allow for green. So it, it cuts down on the amount of time that we have to allocate to each leg of the intersection. So it gives us more time overall. It also allows us to separate the right turn, left turn and through lane so that you don't have people that are wanting to turn right, because I believe right now it's a right and a through, if I'm remembering correctly. So you, you have people that, you know, are going through to continue out to 250 on Barracks that might be in that right turn lane as well as the people who are turning right to head north on 29. So separating those out, allow people to, to make the, the proper movements and, and that left turn lane actually does more than it looks like because it allows us to run both of those at the same time.
One other thing that I'll mention is that we did the traffic analysis on this. The most efficient configuration was actually having two dedicated left turn lanes, one through, and then have the outside lane be a through right to have, to actually maintain that through right movement in the far and the westbound right turn movement. One of the other things that we heard was that people didn't like that movement being a through right because of the one car on a red light that may clog up the works for people who want to make right turns through there, which makes sense, except for when it backs up to the point where people can't get to the right turn lane. Now, the way this is set up is that if that becomes an issue in the future and we need even more capacity, we can easily restripe those arrows and, and figure the signal in such a way that allows that to become a through right in the future if we need to. So it does have a little bit of flexibility built in, but the way it's configured right now is based on some of the public feedback.
So next up we have John Lewis. John, can you hear us?
Yes, hi. Thanks for taking the time to answer my questions. I'm a resident close to Barracks Road. I use this intersection as a driver, as a pedestrian and as a bike rider and frequently use that hill as well for all those methods, not walking, but certainly biking and driving. So I'm very familiar with the situation. I'd like the design here and I think this will yield a lot of improvements. My question is during construction, what are the plans to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists up this key route into the city for people who live on the other side to the west?
Sure, great question. Brian, can you provide specifics, specifics on that? I'll, I'll just say that as part of this, we do intend to keep pedestrian access and bicycle routes open throughout the entire duration of construction, but Brian will be able to provide more specifics on that.
Yeah, there's no doubt this is a challenge with a constrained quarter with only two lanes to work with and the fact that we're relocating the curb inward to the roadway does present some of those challenges. Now, some of what we've done is we've set up a work zone, a bike and pedestrian area as well as one lane of traffic as work is going on, which would be handled via a flagging operation. So basically during off-peak hours, you know, so during the normal times of day when traffic is low, we would be running a flagging operation, one lane of traffic to be able to provide a working area, an area for, for bikes, pedestrians. We're also requiring the contractor to keep a portable ramp on, on hand for, for their ability to move it up and down the corridor as needed to provide continuous accessibility to some of those areas. But it is our intent to provide those continuous opportunities for bikes and pedestrians to have their space. Now that said, there may be instances during construction where a construction vehicle may need to take part of that. And obviously they will need to be cognizant of any users that are, that are, you know, using that space in, in some of those instances, but it is our plan to, to provide that accommodation.
Next up we have Gregory Kastner.
Hi, can you hear me? Great. First, just want to say kudos. I think this is a, a great design. I live in the adjacent kind of Rugby Hills area. And much like, much like John, I am a commuter on bike, kind of all throughout the city and I'm really thrilled with the shared use trail that they have on the side. As I've said in numerous forums, when you just paint a bike lane on the road that is not really a comforting place to be on as a bike and really happy to see this separated bike lane. I guess my, my question is, as you're on the, the bike lane coming up the road, how does that kind of transition to the current sidewalk? Because with it ending at Hilltop, there's still a fair bit of up to go where the rider is going to be going pretty slow and really wouldn't be a great place to get kind of dumped out on the road. How, how do you envision that transition working? I mean, to me, a more natural place for it to end would be up just a little bit further up at Rugby where the hill kind of flattens out and you can get a little speed and merge into traffic a little bit better. That's it. Thank you.
That's it. Thanks. So just to clarify, I believe you're talking about the intersection up here at Buckingham Road. So we envision it to kind of terminate as it's shown here. So the individual would come off of the shared use path and then likely we could put a shero here to continue alongwards to Rugby. I do know that there are some plans in the works on the city's end to kind of continue bike and pedestrian upgrades further into town along the stretch. But for now, unfortunately, we are constrained to what the limits were stated in our SmartSco application. So those will terminate currently at Buckingham Road.
Brian. We, we do have, it, it won't be a, a shared use path, but we do have marking plans for when Preston Avenue is repaved and stuff to continue bicycle facilities up and, and through the, the corridor.
All right. So next we have Patricia Gibson and she's the last person who is raising their hand. So if you guys do have a question you'd like to ask, now is the time and we'll go into public comment after that. If you don't have a question, but you just want to make a comment. Hi Patricia, can you hear us? You might have to unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Sure can.
Great. Could you move the, the map back down to the intersection of Barracks Road and Emmett? I live on Meadowbrook Road and we, before the development of CVS and the Cava Strip there, very often we would walk to Barracks Road to get to see the CVS. With the traffic problems, a lot of traffic is slowing down Meadowbrook Road to avoid the intersection and that includes fire trucks and police trucks. When the development for CVS and the strip across was under consideration, we asked about putting speed bumps on Meadowbrook Road and we were told that there was not enough sightline for the vehicles to safely stop for a speed bump. And my question in the planning commission meeting was, well, if it's not enough sufficient distance to stop for a speed bump, it certainly wouldn't be sufficient distance to stop for pedestrians. So consequently, we most often do not come from Meadowbrook Road to get onto Barracks Road at that intersection anymore. I think there's already been a fatality at that intersection when someone was trying to come up. My question is, I would be very interested to see, could a portion of where Meadowbrook Road meets that road be blocked off the way it is, it's marked off on the pavement east of Whole Foods so that the cars do not block the intersection? The thing I noticed is the cars approach that intersection coming down Preston and Barracks Road, they exceed the 25 miles per hour. When you're on Meadowbrook Road, you can't see the cars coming down and they're trying to make it through the light and so they come barreling down there. When the traffic is stopped, they've blocked the intersection. So the increased traffic from the development can't get out on that intersection and you can't get across there. So my question is, can that be addressed where Meadowbrook Road meets that? I mean, it would seem that traffics could queue up in those track, those turn lanes that you're creating and they could start moving, but there's no way for us to get our cars in there.
Thanks Patricia, that's a great question. I'm not familiar if there's a, an existing don't block the intersection sign up there, but I, I think that's something we can consider looking at in further detail as we move forward with the design. I will just real quickly touch base on our plans for Meadowbrook. So as you can see here, we do have this median island running the length of Barracks Road, which will essentially prohibit any turning, left-hand turning movement from Barracks Road onto Meadowbrook. Subsequently, it will also force Meadowbrook Road to become right in, right out, which means you can only access Meadowbrook Road if you're traveling westbound on Barracks and you can only exit Meadowbrook Road in the, in the direction of Barracks Road as well. Hopefully that will mitigate some of those, the amount of vehicles that are coming in and out of Meadowbrook currently. And like I said, we'd be happy to take a look at what we can do to kind of, I guess incorporate vehicles not blocking that intersection.
So next we have is Georgie Kettler. Hi Georgie, can you hear us? You might have to unmute your mic. Georgie, if you can hear me, hit the unmute mic icon. So I'm going to try to bring her back in another time because we have a couple more hands raised. Up next is Martha. Martha, can you hear us? You're going to have to hit, hit the unmute.
Okay, I just did. Okay, I want to make a comment in the comments section of this, but I also want to ask two questions. One, what about pedestrians crossing Barracks Road, which right now you take your life in your hands to cross either at Blue Ridge or at Hilltop? I see on your map right now that the Hessian Road has a little walk thing, but does that mean that there'll be a light there that you can push to cross, to go across the street? Or are you just going to have to hope that cars see the crosswalk and stop?
Yeah, for, for right now Martha, we are just mimicking existing conditions in our proposed plan out there. So we will restripe those existing crosswalks at Hessian and Blue Ridge. Right now, we don't have anything in the works to have any type of flashing signals.
What about Hilltop?
Yeah, it's, it's the same at Hilltop as well. So we, sorry.
I, I feel that's not very friendly to people that live here. I mean, there should be some way to cross without taking your life in your hands.
Yeah, it's a good, a good question and thanks for the comment. At Hilltop, there is a little bit of a sight distance issue there as well currently. So I think forcing pedestrians down to Blue Ridge or Hessian to cross is a little more safe for those individuals who are wishing to do so. We have received a couple other comments of that nature as well. So like I toward the last individual, it's something we can take a look at and see if we can potentially incorporate it into the design as we move forward.
One thing I'll add is that we are incorporating a four-by-four space for people to wait. You know, so at Hessian Road, the crosswalk markings pretty much just run into the, the ditch, for lack of a better term. But we are going to designate an area in the corner at both intersections for, for the, the location where we want people to, to wait to cross. And all the signage that exists there today will remain in place.
All right. So next we have Tara Little. Tara, can you hear us? You might have to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
You can.
I just have a quick question and maybe I can see this on your, on the dedicated website. The rendering looks just beautiful and such a lovely improvement. But I wonder about the actual brick facade you mentioned, that it's not real brick, that it's some sort of a brick looking facade. Is there a way to see what that actually looks like? And, you know, the, the, the actual material that will be used because it, it can make such a huge difference.
It is, it is concrete. It's called a form liner. So basically the concrete is formed into the pattern of the brick and then it's painted. We, this did come up during some of our steering committee meetings as to how, how this might look and feel and, you know, is it going to look like real brick? And we actually had some samples made by a form liner contractor that we're familiar with. We actually wanted them to, to actually send a, an actual concrete, you know, just, just as it would be, but it was like two tons and pretty expensive to be delivered to the site. And so we had a smaller two-by-two sample with some of the architectural treatments that were chosen by the steering committee. We actually had several samples for different patterns. We considered, I think, five different options and it was chosen pretty clearly that the brick pattern was some kind of more of like the rustic brick kind of look. And we tried to, to make the rendering look much like the, the chosen brick pattern there. But I think Kyle, I don't know, do you still have those samples?
Good question. I have pictures of those samples for certain. So if you would like to shoot me an email, I'd be happy to send those over to you and I'll do my best to track down those samples that we do have. All right. So just to let everybody know, we will be moving to the, in the essence of time, we will be moving to the formal public comment period here in about five minutes. It seems like we have three questions left, so we'll do our best to get through those. If anybody has any questions that we can't get to, I'll be happy to stay on for a few minutes at the end of the meeting and answer any remaining questions that may pop up.
All right. So we're going to bring in Peter next.
Hi, this is, hi, this is Peter Krebs from the Piedmont Environmental Council. Question for you about the trees and their related sort of part two. So while there are lots of trees on that corridor, they're not necessarily super healthy. Lots of invasive species through there. First part of the question is, are all the trees going to be on private land with, you know, maintenance implications? And then the second part is if the project implementation might include like a sweep through to remove invasives and generally beautify the corridor.
Yeah, Peter, thanks for the question. So to answer your first question, yes, all the trees that we'll be replanting will be located on private property. We'll work through specifics with those property owners during the negotiation phase on how those maintenance agreements will work. And I think to answer your second question, so we'll work closely with urban forestry. We have identified trees on our site plan currently that are to be removed. I think during construction, we'll just take a deeper look at those trees that aren't marked. And if we identify some of those that we believe need to come out, our urban forestry, you know, belief should come out due to them being invasive, we'll approach that at that time.
Right. So next we have Patricia Gibson.
Hi. I had one question. When the pedestrian crosses Emmett Street at Barracks Road from the bank building, walking to CBS, the traffic on Barracks Road that would head south, turning on to Emmett Street toward the university makes a right turn on red when the light is flashing for pedestrians to cross from the bank to CBS. It's they, again, they don't have a sightline, the drivers, to see pedestrians and they could be approaching that intersection at a high speed. Are they still going to be able to make the right hand turn? When the pedestrian light is on?
Brian, can you tackle that? I would envision that they would have to come to it then.
Are you referring to the, the northern leg? So crossing to the Cabo or crossing to the CBS? Oh, she's, she's off.
Brian, I think it was vehicles heading towards town on Barracks, on this western leg of Barracks, making right-hand turns on what I presume now is a, is a red. So stop and then making a right-hand turn because there's no turn on red there. Or there's not a no turn on red.
Right now, there's no turn on red or there is no, there is not a no turn on red sign. Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's what I picked up. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So we can look at that. We will basically need to evaluate the sight distance there. There is a wall on that corner of the bank that does provide some challenges with viewing of the pedestrians crossing the street there. But that's, that's a good comment. And that's something that we can definitely look at to see if, if it's appropriate to restrict those right-term movements. While that walk indication is on for that crossing.
Perfect. All right. So it is 6:50 and we still have three hands raised like Kyle mentioned. If you guys want to stick around after the end of public comment, you're more than welcome to ask some questions then, or if you want to shoot him over an email. But we are going to move into the public comment portion now. So if you have a public comment you'd like to make, now you can raise your hand and we will allow you to make your comment.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just add, Ashen, real quick, thanks for that introduction. So as I mentioned earlier, for those of you who are familiar with council meetings or planning commission meetings, each individual will be limited to three minutes to make their comments. I understand that not every individual is comfortable speaking tonight. So if there are any comments that people want to share with the design team, we have those means available via email and on the comment form on the project website. The way things are going to work this evening is you will make your comment. We will not be responding to those this evening. What we will do is we will log those comments into a comment log. And then, once we have all written comments and the verbal comments from this evening, we will compile those and analyze those and see what we can and cannot incorporate into the design moving forward. And then we will publish tho, that comment log on the website no later than August 6th. And as Brian indicated earlier, the public comment period is going to be open for another two weeks following this evening. So until July 23rd, I believe. So that's Friday, July 23rd is when we will stop the comment period for this, for this design. With that being said, we'll open it up to comments now. And these will be logged officially as part of the public hearing transcript.
So far, no hands are raised. We have one Patricia Gibson. Going to bring her on in. Hi Patricia.
Hi. Just to get on the public comment, yes, I am asking about pedestrians crossing from the bank where the wall does obscure vehicles making a right-hand turn. And as the pedestrians are walking from the bank to CBS, their back is at the traffic that's turning. So that was my concern. And the other would be vehicles trying to get onto Barracks Road from Meadowbrook Road when the cars block that intersection despite the sign that is on the right-hand side. Thank you. I really appreciate all the effort to make this a safer intersection that will clear more easily with the traffic. Thank you.
Next up, we have Tara Little. Hi Tara.
Hi, back again. I guess I would just maybe make the point that I was trying to make earlier that I would lobby for an attractive brick in that, in that, you know, in your materials. I mean, it is a gateway to UVA, this corridor. And it can be truly as attractive as your winter rendering, or it can not be very attractive if the material is is cheap and fake looking. I don't know how, how best to explain it, but I, I'm lobbying for, for, for good-looking material as far as that brick facade goes on the wall. Thank you.
No one else has raised their hand yet so far.
So I'll just reiterate for those in attendance, this comment section is what will be tracked as part of the public comment log. So if anybody has any comments, good, bad, otherwise now would be the time to provide those to the design team. These are what are being analyzed and part of our evaluation moving forward. So we'd welcome any feedback that people may have.
All right. Next up, we have Mary Louise. Mary Louise, you're gonna have
Unmuted, right?
Yes, you're unmuted now.
If you can't make a left-hand turn onto Barracks from Meadowbrook, doesn't that imply that there's going to be a lot more traffic up Spotswood and Blue Ridge? Because right now, Blue Ridge is so dangerous because there's lots of blind corners. It's a narrow road and there's no streetlights. This is a thought.
Next, we have Georgie Kettler. Hi Georgie.
Hi, this is actually her husband Herb. And I wanted to express concern about this shared path for pedestrians and bicyclists. And I assume scooters count in there too, although it wasn't mentioned. And I want to know how those bicycles and scooters are going to be managed so that the pedestrians are not threatened, threatened by the bicycle and scooter traffic.
At this time, no one else has raised their hand.
Okay. So I'll make a final call for any public comments. Please use the raise hand feature if you wish to do so.
Or the star nine, if you are a telephone caller and you want to make a comment. All right. Next we have Martha. Hi Martha, you have to hit the unmute button on your screen. Looks like it still might be muted. She is not unmuting, so we'll see if we can bring her back in, in a bit. And we have another comment from Georgie or her husband.
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, I didn't, I couldn't tell whether you heard my comments about the usage of the joint pedestrian path. And how, how you're going to manage, A, the safety of the pedestrians with bicyclists on there. And secondly, are the scooters going to be allowed on there as well, which is even more threatening to a walker?
Thank you. We got it.
Okay. It wasn't clear from.
All right, we're going to try to bring in Martha one last time. Martha, can you hear us?
Yeah, now I can hear you. I would also like to express concern about these multi-use paths. I have a dog that I walk on a leash and I walk down on the Riverview Road, you know, the river road down in the the area down past the Woolen Mills. And with bikes coming up behind you, with skateboards coming up behind you, with children on scooters coming up behind you, it's really, I'm sure there must be some rules for these, but I feel that we're not very good at, at, in making the rules for traffic speeding. Any better, I don't know who is going to monitor the rules for multi-use paths, but it's really hard to walk a dog on those paths. When there are people coming up behind you on bikes and whatnot. So I think we really have to look at that. And I also feel that bikes will probably, if they're going down the hill, would want to be going down on the, when they ride with traffic, which would be riding on the north side of the road. And there's a terrible ditch there. It's not very, not very safe. So I'm, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm still very concerned about the crosswalks. I think something has to be done to have at least one lighted where you can push a button and traffic stops on that stretch of road, whether it's a Blue Ridge, whether it's a Hessian, whether it's a Hilltop, but there should be some way, this is still a neighborhood, even though I don't think you've treated it like that, in my opinion. But I think we should be able to get across the street to go walk in the neighborhood. So those are my two big concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Crystal.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I came in a little bit late. I was taking care of my three-year-old. He needs to run around tonight. So maybe this has already been covered, but I just, I just want to say that I, I like the dual, the multi, multi-use bike lanes. Um, I mean, I would ideally like to see a lane on each side, a bike lane on each side of the road, so that maybe some of those pedestrian, bike, dog walker incidents would be spread out a little bit more. I'd like to say I also go to Riverview Park and I, I walk on that path again with my son. And we've never really had an issue. People with bikes will ring their bike bell when they're behind you. I have issues with people with their dogs off-leash, but that's probably not what we're going to deal with on this road. I get that this is a, this is a neighborhood road or a road that borders a neighborhood, but I, I, I like that it's going to actually be used for like people commuting to and from work. I think that's a great use of this, this road. And space alongside this road. Again, I'd like bike lanes on both sides, but I don't feel like the landowners in this area would be too happy with that. The other thing on this, I kind of, thing on this, I kind of have issue with also is the slip lanes from Emmett to Barrett, Barracks on the sides. I feel like those are also not pedestrian-friendly. And they're just, they're just a danger to pedestrians. And if what you're trying to do here is to like, help people commute safely and get across this, this huge intersection safely, slip lanes are a pretty bad way of doing that. And I also, I like the small islands, the pedestrian, like whatever they're called, safe islands to help you cross the street. It'd be nice if there was like a tree in them because it, as a pedestrian, it's not the most pleasant thing to stand in the middle of traffic in the sun on a road that is busy. But those are, the slip lanes I don't like. And I, I think it's great if people can bike up and down this, this major artery into and out of town. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. Currently, no other hands are raised, Kyle.
Okay, so just real quick to Crystal's comment, this is something that we've gotten a lot of written comments about where the slip lanes. I'm not going to go into detail about them right now, but I just like to reiterate, it's not clear on the plans. Those will be stop-controlled slip lanes, so they are not free-flowing. We will have signals at those slip lanes to help control that movement. All right. If there are no further questions or comments at this time, we'll go ahead and formally end the public comment period. As I reiterated earlier on, this public comment period will remain open for the next two weeks. So if you review the presentation and have additional comments, please feel free to submit those via the website or by contacting me directly, either through email or by giving me a call. This presentation will be posted on the city's website within the next couple of days as well, if anybody wishes to review it. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and end the public comment period. And I will stick around for a couple of minutes to answer any additional questions that individuals may have.
All right, we have a couple of people with some questions. First up is Georgie.
I have a question of, actually it's her, but I have a question about the access to the backside of CBS and the Meadowbrook shops back there. And how that traffic will flow now, when you flow out and when you flow in. I, I understand what it does now. I guess I'm questioning in particular if I'm leaving, can I still go left into the traffic stream toward Emmett? And secondly, when I come down from Barracks, will I be able to turn left into there and into the Meadowbrook thing? Because right now it's a big jumble of two roads coming together. It's not clear how you access them.
Yeah. So, so that was something that we had talked about with CVS while they were submitting their plans. Currently, we're showing it unchanged. You'll still be able to turn left into and out of there. But accidents at that location are being monitored. If at any point in the future, you know, there is a, an accident history that develops there, we can close that off. We've, we've already had that conversation with CVS that their access may be limited in the future due to, to accident concerns. had that conversation with CVS that their access may be limited in the future due to, to accident concerns.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have Peter.
Hello, um, quick question that I think might be of interest is, is the city council action on an agenda yet? And if so, what's the date of that meeting?
Yeah, great question, Peter. It is not on the agenda yet. I'm envisioning it's going to be probably the second meeting in August, if not the first meeting in September. It's going to take us a little bit to get through these comments and incorporate anything we need to into design and, and put that final design public hearing packet together. But hopefully, we're at in front of council, you know, a month and a half from now.
And next we have Tara Little.
Um, Kyle, quick question. Will the overhead lines be buried and as a part of the construction process?
They will not. So we will be relocating some pools along the corridor further into the bank on the south side of the street, but we will not be undergrounded any utilities as part of this project.
Okay, well then, you'll want to make some sort of arrangements for these special trees that we're trying to maintain, because as you've probably noticed, the Esplundy Trucks go in, have already gone into this, you know, group of trees and they just cut them off. And that's why they're so misshapen now. So if you're going to trouble to buy trees and plant trees and protect the canopy, they're going to be, I'm just, you know, they're going to cut, they're going to cut them down to, to inappropriately.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll continue to look into that as we move forward and be certain to put trees in those locations that, you know, aren't going to interfere with the overhead lines.
Thank you.
Our next question is from Joel.
Hey, I just wanted to ask them. So is this a done deal and we're just negotiating the details? Or is this still up for being approved?
The funding for the project has been allocated. Right now, we are at the 60% design phase, so I would say that all the major design characteristics are relatively set in stone. I think some of the issues that we discussed tonight, such as improving crossings further up Barracks or you know, things of that nature can be incorporated, or we can take a look into incorporating those into the project. But I think overall, the general intent of the project as it's shown here is, is what we'll be moving forward with.
Next, we have Patricia Gibson.
Hi. When CBS was in the planning stages, as you said, they designed their site to accommodate the addition of that turn lane there. Shortly before CBS was proposed, Clara Wheeler was proposing an apartment building on her property to the, I guess that would be the east of the CBS. As you design this corridor, is there any consideration for the traffic flowing out of there? I didn't know if her project was going to resurface or be resubmitted once the R1 is rezoned to allow for multiple dwellings.
So we took into account all approved site plans when we were doing the traffic analysis. But we're also extremely constrained, you know, by the buildings and stuff that are already on this intersection. So there's, there's not too much more we can do to optimize or, or fit more vehicles through here. So if there's another development that goes in, it will, it might have some mitigation factors that they would have to do internally, or something may be limited on the site to, you know, because of the traffic on the roadway, but there's really not much more we can do to, to accommodate even more vehicles through the intersection.
Thank you.
Next, we have Martha.
Yeah, I'm back again. You know, I feel one of the big drawbacks of this whole project has been that the people that are most affected, which was only about six houses, I'm not one of those, but were the only ones that really were being impacted. So you didn't really have a lot of comment from people that traverse this road on a daily basis. Love coming up this road where the trees cover the road. And so you, even tonight, I feel you're not really getting enough comments to make you realize that this is a major change to an entrance to our city. And I really think that now that we have really know, you're saying it's pretty much a fait accompli. You know, I've come down to both your meetings at both city council and planning commission, where they just rubber stamped it that it was okay with your smart scale, wherever you get your money or whatever. But this is critical to the look of people coming into our city. And I feel that the only thing we have left to really ask you to do is make this wall not be out of character with our Jeffersonian city. And, you know, a fake brick wall, it just, if it's really, I would like to come down and see it. So I would like, I'm going to get in touch with Kyle Kling and have you send me pictures, but that's critical to the look of this thing at this point, seeing as we can't stop it. We, we can at least give our comments that, and there are not enough people, in my opinion, giving comments right now. So you're going to think, oh, well, nobody cares, but they do care and they're going to care when we ruin this entrance to the city. So let's, I think it's on your shoulders now to make this look as good as possible. And to me, the only thing left to really work on is what the wall looks like. And then I do worry, I have to say, having lived here for 30 years, I worry about who's going to mow this grassy strip, but we'll get to that at another time. But please concentrate on this wall and make sure that it really fits into the character of this city. Thank you.
Doesn't look like there's any more questions or hands raised. I lied, we have another one. Hi Patricia.
I just, I just wanted to say again, I really appreciate the effort to improve the safety for all of us that come through this intersection. It's a lot of hard work and while we want to maintain a character and look the safety and the traffic flow, I think they don't have to be mutually exclusive. And I just thank you again for the city and the designers involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. It's always good to hear the positive feedback as well.
We have a question from Drew Dunnington.
Hello, yeah, you know, I would like to say, well, I like to design. I think, you know, there is limiting ability to do what you need to do and you're making the best of a situation that exists today. My question or comment is more about the stormwater runoff from, I guess, Hilltop to Blue Ridge, Blue Ridge to Hessian, and then Hessian to Meadow Brook on the north side of Barracks. I see in the renderings, you have a, it looks like stormwater management plan on the south side with a curbing gutter system. What's the plan for the north sides, particularly when you cross these intersections? For example, today's afternoon shower, it's a small river crossing Hessian, the Hessian intersection on the north side.
Drew, I'll, I'll take that one. So as you, as I'm sure you know, when you look at that ditch, which is in many cases not even a ditch, it screams up the hill with a highly eroded slope up to Dominion Power Poles. And, and I, I, I would like to have had the ability to make some improvements on the drainage there. Unfortunately, there are too many constraints, too many areas of concern. Once you start making improvements to stormwater, you know, adding curb or even shoulders or doing any grading on that side, there's a tremendous amount of risk with the unstable slope that exists on that side. So our approach on this project has been make all reasonable efforts to stay off of that side, including the trees, the root systems that, in my opinion, are holding that slope together. And make all of the improvements on the south side and mitigate that risk to keep the, the project viable. So I guess I understand the concerns that you have and but unfortunately, with the project and scope and the budget and everything that's available for this project, making improvements on both sides of the road are, are just not, not feasible with some of the limitations we have. Does that kind of answer your question?
Drew, you might be muted.
Yeah, the pedestrian waiting zone, I think you call it, at the corner of Hessian and where Hessian crosses. Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if anybody's going to be able to stand there in the rain is my concern, so.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, and that, that's all on the existing pavement. That's, that's, that's new pavement. That's all just kind of restriping of the existing pavement.
Yeah.
And if you're in a strong thunderstorm, I probably wouldn't advise it.
Right. And I think if I see it correctly, the bus parking zone, I guess, is at Meadow Brook there? I guess you'll resurface the road and I do so the best you can with your stormwater management, but that, that area today is a small pond during storms. So I would imagine you'll approve that, so.
Yeah, it'll, it'll actually, the drainage coming down, the, the face of that slope will come down and around the curb line. And then will be sent to the little ditch with some drainage elements that exist a little bit farther up Meadow Brook.
Great. Thanks for answering.
I don't see any more questions or hands being raised.
All right, so we'll go ahead and wrap things up this evening. As I said several times already, if you guys have any more questions, comments, concerns, whatever they may be, feel free to shoot us an email and we'll get back to you as soon as we can on anything. I appreciate everybody's involvement in this project and looking forward to communicating with everyone and providing updates as we move along.
Thank you.